Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jeremy.
What are these?
Okay.
How are you?
An approval of minutes.
Mr. President, make a motion, approve the minutes.
We have a motion. Motion. The second. All those in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Approval of minutes. Uh, first reading, please.
Roll call?
Do you need a roll call for the approval of minutes?
No, probably just to establish a quorum.
For attendance, yeah.
We do. Uh, first reading?
Rickner?
Oh, for approval, okay.
Here. Present.
Present.
Present. Here.
Okay. Sorry about that. Roll call. Now the approval.
No, kids.
We've already done that. First reading, please.
First reading, general fund. Salaries are sixteen thousand seven hundred ninety-three. Motor vehicle highway, luminous, one million eight hundred and fifty thousand. Equipment, fifty-seven thousand. Opioid unrestricted, contractual, ten thousand. Lease purchase, fifteen thousand five hundred and two dollars and twenty-four cents. Adult probation user fee, reduction, twenty-three thousand one hundred and six. Truck S-force, twenty thousand. Animal shelter donations, fifty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty-six. Veterans donation, two million seven hun- or two thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. EMA donation, three thousand. E nine-one-one donation, two hundred. Two thou- twenty-twenty-three Go-Bond, three point three million and three million. Public safety data tech, three thousand six hundred. DEA forfeiture, thirty thousand. Ninety-three point nine four six S U I D S D Y grant, four thousand five hundred. LRB CCMG match grant, three hundred thousand and three hundred thousand. First reading.
Thank you for the first reading. Any discussion on the first reading? Oh, good. Thank you very much, appreciate that. We have some, uh, special presentations this afternoon. And, um, like to, uh, first presentation, kind of refer to Councilman Bozak. He brought, uh, I appreciate, first of all, appreciate bringing this to everybody's attention. And I'm gonna kind of let you, uh...
Okay, well...
...take the lead on this one.
So I got an email, um, a couple weeks ago from a resident in the county, and I kind of wanted to read it. It kind of explains what happened and what we're doing today. On, uh, Monday, January twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-four, the Port- Porter County Aging Transportation Driver picked up my husband Joe from his dialysis appointment. The driver noticed that Joe was slumped over and unresponsive, prompting for a quick call for an ambulance. The swift, swift action likely prevented Joe from experiencing a full-blown stroke or even death. It was determined that Joe had experienced a TIA, a mini-stroke, highlighting the importance of the driver's quick thinking. I want to express my gratitude to this department and the driver for their life-saving actions. That was from Joe's wife. So she asked that we honor him, and we felt that it was appropriate to do so. Something else I wanted to read, uh, just, uh, we had put together a real quick thing, um, just detailing a little more what Donald, uh, Raymond had done, excuse me. Driver Raymond Ba- it's Beatty was driving the bus when he stopped at St. Agnes to pick up another client. He noticed that Joe was having serious medical issues. He called the PCACS office and the Transportation Director, Don Stover, and the new Executive Director, Jason K., because I don't know how to pronounce his last name. I apologize. That was really embarrassing. Just getting this. Left immediately for St. Agnes. Emergency services were called, and Joe was taken to hospital for treatment. It was a good observation by the driver to notice that Joe was in trouble, and the medical service team quickly arrived. So I guess what we want to do is honor, um, Raymond Beatty and Don Stover for their quick actions and for saving a life. So thank you. If you guys can come on up, please. So this, uh, the one for Don, this certificate is awarded to Don Stover? Yes. Porter County Aging and Community Service in recognition of your outstanding contributions, dedications, and valuable service to the citizens of Porter County. So thank you very much. And then we've got one for Mr. Is it Beatty?
Beatty.
Beatty, I apologize for... Oh, man, I'm not good at names today. In recognition of your outstanding contribution, dedication, and valuable service to the citizens of Porter County. Raymond, thank you very much. I didn't know how you wanted to do it.
The other thing, too, is, um, the actual director until Friday, what, five o'clock?
Yes.
Okay. Bruce, uh, Linder is, um, he's dedicated seventeen years to the Porter County Council of Aging and Citizen Services. He told me the whole way.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you and the team up here. Congratulations. She's been on the board forever, I think, so...
Yes. And, uh...
Recognizing these people is really inspirational. I love the, what you did for it, recognizing people who just do their job right.
But it takes leadership coming down. They were following what you do as example all these years. So really, it's, it's a collaborative effort for everybody, and it's, it's awesome. It's, uh, I, wherever I go places, I tell people this is the greatest county in the state, and this is one of the many, many, many reasons why, uh, we can say it proudly. So here from the council, on behalf, uh, recognition of your outstanding contributions, dedication, and valuable service to the citizens of Porter County. And, uh, for seventeen years, we appreciate that, and you're gonna have a bigger shindig on Friday, we know. And, uh, but again, thank you very much for all you have done, and, uh, good luck in Tahiti, Hawaii.
I'd like to have the new director stand and put and recognize Jason Kegabine.
Kegabine. Oh, I love what I said.
That experience, Oe, and he's also been the Boys and Girls Club, and he's ball of wire. So I'm really dreaming it over something.
Well, again, you guys can hold him up and enjoy what you're gonna be teaching. Appreciate it. It's awesome. Thanks, like, you guys.
Good job, Joe. Welcome. Congratulations to Bruce on your retirement and, uh, folks for, uh, the outstanding work and, uh, quick thinking, uh, that you did. Really appreciate it. Very good job. And good job to Council, Council members, uh, Bozak and Sims for bringing that to everybody's attention. Thank you. Uh, next, we have a presentation, I believe, from, uh, Mitch Peters on the, uh, Indiana Dunes Tourism.
Hello.
Hello.
I wanted to take this opportunity to fill you in on all of the new developments, uh, quickly, because I know you have a full agenda.
Somebody...
Front seat here.
So I wanted to first introduce our new interim CEO, President, Executive Director, whatever, Christine Livingston, as well as our new Senior Operations Director, Jenny Matthews.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Jenny Matthews.
And you were also... Opportunity in the prize, right?
I'm writing it down.
So, so they all know each other. Um, and we're making some shifts, as you're all aware, so I wanted to kind of update you just quickly. We've got, uh, we're going to be getting some additional new people, a new retail manager, uh, and some new part-time to run the gift shop, which is becoming reality now, and bike shop, et cetera, the things that we're doing up at the visitor's center. The Beyond the Beach Gift Shop will open this spring. We're partnering with local gift shops and businesses to provide things to, uh, merchandise to sell in there. So we want to make it more than just shot glasses and little bobblehead, um, although I'm sure we'll have those as well. But...
Bobblehead?
Craig's... And so, but we're gonna partner with the local artisans to provide us with things that will also enable us to get people into the community. When they see this from this shop and there's a rack brochure or something to direct them to get people into the community. So that's real important to us. What we're focusing on right now is partnerships. So we're finalizing the staffing requirements on that. The salary will be back in a month or two with salaries to adjust those things around, uh, to increase the part-time, et cetera.
So you guys got the, the other people moved out, that's all?
They're out. It's empty.
Unfortunately.
We, we got some of their, uh, hardware to, uh, you know, to initiate operations. But yes, we are now the purveyors of the Beyond the Beach Gift Shop. So we're focusing on partnerships, and one of the important partnerships has always been, particularly for this council, the venue partnership. So here's our plan. In order to strengthen that partnership, we're going, we have, the board has already allocated ten percent of the net profit from the gift shop, uh, to the venues to be divided equally, over and above the hundred and fifty that we currently allocate through our budgeting process. We're, and now, we don't expect a huge windfall in year one.
Right.
But we do expect this to grow.
What, uh, venues are you talking about, Memorial Op-?
The four. Expo Parks, Memorial Opera House, and the museum. So the traditional four that we have assisted with, we are going to allocate, and the board has already approved that, um, last month. We are rotating our board meeting to each of the four venues. April, we're going to the museum, and in June, we're going to the park, uh, Sunset Hill. And I know that we have talked to, um, the other two venues as well, and that's in the planning stage. So we're going to get our boards out to, and our board members out to these venues. We're simplifying the contract with the venues. We're simplifying the reporting process. In the past, it's been cumbersome, it's been somewhat of a burden, and all of this is Christine and the board's doing. I, I'm not doing this. When I say "we," it's a collective "we." So that's where we're going with this. We're strengthening our partnerships. Uh, we're giving, we're going to do web ads at no charge for the venues on the tourism website. So we're going to plug them in to everything we've got, and we have a lot of hits on that website. Partnerships, we're strengthening partnerships within the communities, governing bodies regionally and at the state level. March fourteenth, we're having an annual event, our, uh, State of the Tourism Event. It's at Riley's Railhouse. We're going to give you invitations, each of you, to that. We ask you every year. This year, the focus is going to be on our partnerships. The venues will be there, or at least a representative. One of them's out of town. I don't know which one, I think Kevin. But representatives will be there. So... We feel that we need to solidify our partnerships with all of these state organizations, NERC, IDDC, NDOT, Northwest Indiana Forum, NICD, Purdue, VU. So we're working on strengthening partnerships. That's our focus. The Indigenous Cultural Trail, as you all know, that's coming into Phase Two, if you will. Christine has raised over a half a million dollars in grants and donations presently. So that is, that process is continuing. Uh, she recently obtained another thirty-six thousand dollar grant to go toward the next phase, which is limestone sculptures and signage. We're working with a local signage company. What's the name of it? Mix Design. I do know that, I just can't think. And, um, they're doing our signage. So we're, we're doing everything as much in partnership as we can. And we'll provide much more updates on that whole project at the annual event. The grant program, where we give grant money out to the events and communities, we're simplifying that. We're simplifying the reporting, um, requirements for that. We're, we want more people to be able to utilize these grant funds in support and strengthen their communities and strengthen our partnerships. The welcome sign, I'm almost to the end, folks. Welcome sign, we're designing a new welcome sign up there on forty-nine that will be more inviting, if you will.
Is there gonna be advertisements, like The Chamber does or anything, or is it just...
No, we can't.
Or simple.
We can't do that.
I didn't, I wasn't asking you to do it, I was just curious.
No, the reason we can't do it, have you ever tried to get zoning?
For ten years.
Yeah. On forty-nine? No. So we're currently working with the architects and engineers in the town of Porter. We would like to, at some point, take each of you through there for, for a tour. Uh, that's kind of been our plan. We are a national park now. This is a huge asset for this county. I don't even think we've begun to scrape the surface of what that means for us or what that can look like while we've begun. But there's so much more that we can do. We have this redesign project that's been in the, in the works for over ten years. Uh, we are reworking those plans, making them more cost-effective. Obviously, prices are up since ten or twelve years ago. But we are hoping, and I know there's been some talk about bonding that project through the county, we are hoping that at some point you will do that. Because the, the funding that we put into enhancing the exhibits and enhancing that facility will only trickle down to enhance our communities. And that's our focus. So we want to, uh, pass out these invitations. She's doing it because I'm so slow in my old age.
Thank you.
But...
Thank you.
I told her I would do it at the beginning, but she wanted to wait, because she says, "That's what you do." So, um, and we're really excited. And we're excited to, about this direction that, uh, that we're moving now. And we're really hopeful that you are all supportive and can attend these events. So are there any questions?
Thank you, Mitch. Thank you for your leadership on the board. Congratulations to both of you. Whatever we can do to help you, please let us know. Does anybody have any questions or...
I do. Um, it says, "NERC, help you with any of these funds?"
NERC hasn't funded anything. We do talk to NERC about grants that are coming through their organization, uh, but they haven't actually funded us directly.
How about the RDA? Are they doing this?
No, not as of yet, not as of...
Have, have you approached either RDA or NERC?
NERC is more of a pass-through organization, so a lot of the...
I'm on the board, that's, yeah, that's why I'm asking.
DNR grants, DNR grants, we, you know, Cleveland Cliff's has donated. We did a big public campaign that we crowdsourced through the state, the IHCD, I believe it was. Uh, and then we have other, like, smaller sources. But NERC, um, I work with Mitch, and he knows the project, so he can pass the things my way. RDA, we have an approach about funding.
Thank you.
And I'm your appointment, so all of my efforts are the result of you guys appointing me.
Yeah, we need to talk about that.
But, you know, we're focused, and I wanted to bring the new focus to you.
I do appreciate the, the ten percent going to the other venues and being proactive.
Yes.
That, that, I, I appreciate, that's awesome, thank you.
Well, that was Christine and, and myself.
Because everybody's struggling, as you know, with the department.
I appreciate...
As I was sharing it with each of them, they were very appreciative and just really part of strengthening those relationships. Everyone's excited about it, and moving the board meetings around, getting the board better acquainted, I think will be helpful, too.
That's awesome, thank you very much.
Okay. Well, thanks for the time. I'm sorry for taking your time, but...
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you're doing. Congratulations. Have a good night. I like the tie.
We have a presentation, uh, Portage Recovery Association. Anybody for...
Here we go. Is it Jake?
Yeah, what's up, folks? Hi.
What's up with you?
Can we hear? Hi, thanks for having me.
You have the floor.
Yeah, so, uh, Dave, uh, got ahold of me, um, a couple weeks ago via email and, uh, followed up with when I was up here last month, and asked me some questions and said that I was able to satisfy them. And, uh, just up here, kind of seeing if we can get an opportunity to get this funding. The way that we kind of figured it out is that we'd be able to open, right now, we're open twenty-two hours a week. With this funding, we can probably expand to around fifty, uh, pay people in recovery, um, a wage for people that aren't working right now. And it's more about, uh, not only having a safe place for people seeking that serenity to go to, but also helping rebuild people that maybe need an opportunity to get a couple extra dollars in their pockets, um, that threw a lot of things away. And we have a lot of trusted servants that are out of work, so, uh, the opportunities are endless for being able to open this facility, uh, during the daytime also. And with our age demographics, we've been surveying a lot lately, and one of the things people said is, uh, they wish they had some daytime hours because they don't drive at night, and, uh, just looking for, uh, some help.
You're also getting money from PACT.
From PACT?
P-A-C-T.
I don't know anything about that personally.
Uh, Mr. President, I have a question. Have we developed anything of what we're gonna do for this opioid money? Is there, have we developed a committee? Are we talking about that? I like what you guys are doing, I think it's a wonderful thing, but I know we have already donated. Personally, I want to make sure that we have a system set up for people to apply, or if we're gonna use that money for outside, or if we're gonna keep it in, internal. I, I don't like the idea of just having onesie-twosie people coming up and asking us for that money unless we have a policy or procedure in place.
And, Randy, Andy, you weren't here last meeting, um, we had something... We, this gentleman, it came before us, and, um, we had asked him, beyond the agenda, for that, for that exact reason. Um, we, we don't have a proper process in place. We're, we're getting a committee. I believe we have a committee formed right now.
Oh, we did?
Yeah, and one of the, one of the things, um, that we talked about was actually putting a pause on this program. You know, until the committee comes back with KPIs, you know, a process how we're gonna do this, let the money build up, and then, and then we're gonna go from there. So, but I thought it was unfair for this gentleman because somebody had reached out to him and said, "Hey, you know, you can get some money." I said, "Well, we'll put you on your agenda." That doesn't mean it's gonna be accepted, but I think, you know...
And they're doing some great things, I don't...
And the Commissioner's Office already approved this, and so that was in November, I believe.
Did they tell you to come to us for the money?
So they appro- they, they reached out and basically said, "Is there anything else that we kind of need?" And I kind of threw this idea at them. Um, and then I was supposed to come to a meeting, but I never, I didn't know I was supposed to be here, so it was turned down. So when I found out about that, then the first meeting in January was, uh, what, appointments or something?
Yeah.
So I didn't come to that, came last month, first time I had the opportunity to come share our side, you know what I mean? So...
You weren't here, so I, I made the motion that we form a committee while in the process so we can try to save some time.
Yeah, I, and I love...
Because unfortunately, government moves rather slowly. And so by us already having the committee, now we can work with the internal information that we need so we can see what money's available.
Sure.
Where's it coming from? We're a step ahead, basically.
You're, you're absolutely a step ahead, but again, after this gentleman, we're taking a pause...
Right.
From all, from all donations. So we're, we're, there's nobody gonna be coming up in front of us for some time until we get a, you know, get a lockdown...
Right.
On, on what process we're gonna...
The internal...
The internal process.
For us and our organization, man, we have the vision of a, someday, a twenty-four-hour facility where anybody can come to look and help for addiction, alcoholism, if they're suicidal, if they need somewhere just to go. Um, there's nothing around here for, the closest place you can dry out in this area is in Dyer. Where are these people supposed to go? When, when someone comes and they want help, you have to help them right then, because their mind might change within ten minutes.
But my, my issue isn't what you guys are doing. I think it's wonderful, and you know I fully support what you guys, I've talked to you about it before, but my problem is, is I think there's a lot of organizations in our county that would say something similar. And we haven't given them an opportunity. We, we're, we're just picking and choosing right now. To me, that's not fair. We need to have a, a process where people, and a deadline, when people can apply by, if that's what we're gonna do with the money. Because to me, it's, it's great what you guys are doing, but there's a lot of good organizations out there, and we did donate to your organization, correct?
Yeah, last year.
Yeah. And, and, so this would be a...
I understand this is from different money, though, from what my understanding was, unless I was misinformed.
I have no...
Different set of funding.
This would be from the op- if we were to approve this...
Oh, it wasn't from the opioid money last time?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's my only, that's my personal opinion. I'm just speaking for myself. I think, let the process play out, we should get it set up, and we should be fair to everybody in the county. That's my opinion. And it's not against you, because...
I'm with you, dude.
You're doing a great thing.
Hey, man, I get it.
Joy, I just have a, I'm looking at the agenda, so we're, this is the request at the back of the agenda.
Is it? The council on the left page, the ten thousand dollars.
I'm sorry? Yeah, okay.
Opioid unrestricted.
There he is.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I'm confused about.
What do you mean, what do you mean it's from a different...
No, it's fine.
...out of money? It's, it's all...
Was that ARPA money?
Opioid money. No, 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 it's not ARPA. It's the opioid money.
So the first donation was out of opioid money?
Yes. Correct.
And this is opioid money, too?
Correct.
Same thing.
Yeah.
Yes.
Just clear...
I, I'm not sure where...
Thank you for clarifying, Jeremy.
So...
Just looking, that's all, I was wondering, I, I don't remember this.
So...
Oh, I was, I, I thought it was every year that there, a different amount comes in.
We do get additional monies every year for the opioid. I think the first one was a big chunk, and then it's smaller chunks after.
For the next sixteen years.
Yeah. And our organization does qualify for four out of the five qualifiers to get that money, eighty percent, that's pretty good.
So Jake, what did you...
Guys apply if we do a process.
Yeah. Jake, what did you do with the first ten thousand dollars? What was the plan?
That opened up the cafe, and it paid for one year's rent and one year's water bill, and then the rest we used just for paint, barring and stuff like that.
And how, how's the cafe doing? I mean, is it...
Better than expected. We have people, I can give you some examples. We have people that come straight from rehab, their families don't want them around, they have nowhere to go. They come to us. So we offer a safe place for three to four hours every night, plus they can go on the other side of the building and get, yeah, additional recovery that they need, maybe a meeting of some kind or some more fellowship. We have a place, we're the only place anywhere that is open some hours per day for anyone that needs a safe place to go to. We've had people literally dropped off drunk in the cold on our benches outside. It was just in the newspaper two days ago about what, an article that we had. She was just dropped off on our front steps. January, where is she supposed to go? We're grateful that we were there, we were able to bring her in, we got her into treatment, and she has over forty days now. I chatted with her yesterday. So like, a situation like that, like, if we weren't there, what would she have done? Froze to death? She had no phone on her, she had no identification, we had to take her to the hospital, but she knew where to go.
I think I'm, I'm...
So to be able to expand...
For everybody on the council, you know, if there is anybody up here that, you know, in disagreement that, of what you do is good work and beneficial. I think what our debate is, and we have to decide tonight, is, um, you know, this opioid money that's available. There are other organizations, and I guess my question to you is, if you were to get this money tonight again, the second round, I mean, if you continue to expand, you have a plan. You have a plan for your organization to be self-supportive. You know, we are not here to support, you know, the nonprofit. You are here to... You know, we are not here to support, you know, the nonprofit, you are here to, you know, if money available to help, but you have a plan.
Sure.
If you continue to grow and, you know, continued success, and what is that plan? How are you going to sustain yourself?
So, we're becoming what's called a recovering community organization, RCO, and once we become that, there's endless amounts of state grants that are available. There's seventeen of them already in the state of Indiana, and what our organization would do is we would offer multiple pathways of recovery, other, like twelve-step meetings, we would offer yoga for the community, art classes for the community, just different community-sponsored things, that's how we would get more funding. We also just constantly, I go door-to-door looking for donations, we have people from within that give donations, we're self-supporting. They called us about all of this, I never reached out to anybody from the Commissioner's office for any of this funding. We kept getting reached out to because I feel Portage, personally, Portage is a place that's just not looked at a lot because.
Who called you?
We got a call from Commissioner's office, yeah.
Her regnance.
Yeah.
Asking for money?
Coming to a meeting to express what we're doing for Portage and what we're doing for this situation, she liked my idea, and they ran with it, and we ran with it.
And I went out there and visited the thing, and that's, that's how they got the first, the first round.
And, right, and.
Yeah. I got you. Yeah.
Yeah, and we also got some from like the city of Portage, too, they gave us a pretty big check of that opioid money.
How much did they give you, Jake?
Thirty-six, thirty-six, six fifty over three years.
Thirty-six thousand, what are you using that money for?
That pays all of our bills, so the money that we bring in from all these grants and everything, we're able to save because the goal is to buy a building and open it twenty-four hours, so we have a plan in place, everything helps. If you, I walked out here with ten dollars, I'd shake everybody's hand and be just as grateful.
What were, what are, what is your plans for this ten thousand?
To expand the hours at the cafe from April through September, an extra twenty-two hours a week, just to have more availability when it's nice out, because you know how it is when it's nice out, I know how it is. A little different, I mean, people were driving crazy today, there was bikes everywhere, springtime, summertime, members just, they get out, you know what I mean, we wanna make sure we're there, you know, and if we don't get it, then we just keep doing that as usual.
So you're open for twenty-two hours a day, is that what you said?
Twenty-two hours a week right now.
Week, a week, sorry, a week.
So every night, we're open from five to eight, except Fridays and Saturdays, we're open till ten. This would take us ten AM to ten PM Friday, Saturday, Sunday, but still stay open those three hours at night.
And this might be used for payroll, correct?
Yeah, and ten ninety-nines, yeah, we'll be ten ninety-nine, everybody.
The ten ninety-nine. Question, Ryan or Dave, would it be possible to do a reimbursement grant to where, you know, once a month, he shows his need, and then you cut the check up to, up to that, you know, instead of just giving ten thousand, it makes the council more comfortable, and it's still helping your goal, I know you.
Yeah, you said, I'm happy with ten bucks, you know what I mean?
It's not that, it's just, you know, we're looking at, you know, ten ninety-nine and payroll tax and stuff like that, just handing over a lot, you know.
Sure, well, I look like a responsible kinda guy, don't I? They gave me, I told them, after they gave me that check in Portage, I told them, they never even carded me the whole time.
For the council.
Gave me thirty-six grand, never.
Yes, the winner.
To, and who is on that committee?
Jeremy, Greg, and myself, I believe, and Laura Blaney, maybe?
Yep, Laura, Barb.
Have you met?
They just got, they literally just formed this.
Okay.
Within the last.
So.
We don't have anything in place.
We've got a committee formed, we don't have anything in place yet.
Nothing.
Correct.
I just keep showing up because you guys keep telling me to.
You keep showing up because what?
I keep getting invited to come.
I think the point was, Sylvia, that they, they had made the request that we denied initially, but approved a couple others before the Commissioners passed that resolution to create an ordinance and we appointed some people, so I think that's why.
Well, I guess my question, are we soliciting nonprofits?
Right.
That's why we're putting a, that's why we're putting a pause on.
That's the problem.
That's why.
Specifically, specific nonprofits, and we're not soliciting them all, that's an issue.
Okay, but, but, yeah.
Like I said to this gentleman.
No, it's not his fault.
It's not his fault, internally, it's, this is our problem, and we have to, we have to be on board and get the proper.
You guys gotta remember, when, okay, after the first round was done, there was a second burst, so to speak, and remember, we, we voted on it, but we voted negatively on his, we gave to the Moraine House and, I think it was three twenty, Calumet. And none of them were there, I spoke on behalf of the Moraine House, I don't know if Andy or someone else spoke on three twenty, but it wasn't fair for Jake to get turned down when nobody had represented him.
What did those other organizations?
They got ten thousand.
Opioid money?
Yes, they, they got a second dose.
And I believe I voted no because I don't think it showed up, and that's why.
Well.
I mean, we.
But that's.
Process in place, people.
I'm just telling you how we got here, it's just how we got here. So it seemed unfair for Jake, so he was invited back, so that if anyone had any questions, we could vote and turn, give him the money or not give him the money, because he was one of the three that were moved on from the Commissioners for us to consider. That is it, that, that's why he's sitting here, you know?
We need a, we need to decide as a council on the ten thousand.
Well, we need to bring it to a close.
Your auditor.
And go from there.
There's also a question reference to Dave or Ryan, where in which it was feasible to reimburse them, and we feel, it's my understanding, they have an accountant or somebody that works with them, correct?
Yeah, we just hired an accountant this past Saturday.
Okay, so in order to let you reimburse them, you have to have the proper documentation, come to our office prior to dispersing any money.
Okay, and that, I would feel comfortable doing that, instead of just handing over ten thousand, if we were gonna do that, I would like that as my, as my motion, if we did that, would be to do a reimbursement and not just hand over the ten thousand, and you have to show the proper documentation, and if you do.
So is that the?
That would be, that would be a.
Are we going to continue, then? Does it come again for another ten thousand?
No.
This program is essentially paused right now, Sylvia.
It's done.
This is done, we're gonna let, we're gonna let the, the committee figure out, you know, the parameters in which they wanna, you know, do this program. So as of right now, this is done, it's paused.
Unrestricted and the restricted are gonna keep moving up in the fund.
So we have a motion with the language.
I didn't hear a motion.
I'm sorry?
I didn't hear a motion.
You wanna make a motion?
Asking if we could.
I was gonna say, I don't think we have a motion.
No.
But I would make a motion that we would put them first on to see the committee, that's my motion, I'd like to send them to the committee and go through the process.
Well, Red had a motion.
I didn't have, I had.
You didn't make a motion.
A question, if we could do that, I would feel better if we did a reimbursement grant instead of a actual just grant.
And then cap it at a certain amount, cap it at ten thousand.
It would be capped at ten thousand dollars, but.
We have one or two motions.
I don't disagree with, yeah.
Does that mean like I'd have to, we couldn't pay the people until we got, so we'd have to mark down everybody's payroll for the entire month?
That you'd have to get with the auditors, whatever, whatever they would have to use for their.
We are department with reference to what's required, what you need to do, and we would be prior to, so you would understand the procedure.
Yeah.
Could you do that, I mean?
I mean, it's just extra work for me, you know what I mean, if I get the ten thousand all in one time, I won't come back and ask for anymore.
It, it wouldn't be all in one time.
Or whatever, however it works, you know what I mean?
Work for your payroll, bring it to the auditors.
Then we gotta pay.
They would pay checks.
Sounds like it.
And then the moment ten thousand, if it did get hit at the end of the year, that caps.
So we have to pay the accountant to do extra work, and then.
Well, it, everything is accountable, we're accountable.
See what you're saying.
So.
If they start working with the county funds, their funds are probably under other entities.
Right.
And we have to answer to them, especially when we're in audit, so there are guidelines and deadlines that we have to meet, so it's not just like, you know, we're giving you money from the county coffers, we're giving you money from either federal or state.
Sure.
Did we do the same for the other organizations? I mean, what were they gonna?
Well, they, they submitted the bill, right? Yeah.
This also was, I believe, the only one.
What's payroll?
To paying people and payroll.
The other one was.
Everything else was all a capital expenditure.
Building projects, yeah.
Pay something in that.
A roof.
This was the first one that came in front of us that involved payroll.
Yeah, it's not even like a pay, it's a stipend, you know what I mean, payroll, I don't, we're not taking taxes, yeah.
Well, Mr. President, I, you know, we deployed some of this money right away, which I thought it was the right thing to do with social worker and, and some organizations, however they got here, they got here, but it, these organizations are on the front line, so, I mean, that's what the money was for, right? But I do also agree with stepping back and looking at this from a bigger perspective, step, taking a pause, stepping back, and, and looking at how we can make the greatest impact, you know, over the next five, ten, fifteen years.
I'm happy to come back or meet with a separate committee, I don't need a resolution today.
No, but I, I think we need to.
You know.
Either say yes or no to it, but, I mean, this is Portage, this is what, who I represent to, and, I mean, you're out there on the ground level, helping people.
Every day, face-to-face, like I'm seeing the people come in.
To me, that's the purpose of this money, a good, a good portion of it, so, but, I think we do have, need to have a process, we need to take a bigger look at it, but we began to deploy some of it to begin with, and we should finish that and move on to the next phase of it. So with that said, I'll make a motion to approve the ten thousand dollars with whatever process that, you know, the auditor's office sets up for you.
First grant.
Fine, yeah, if that's.
Second.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second. Madam, is this a roll call, or?
Yes.
Well, if there's no discussion. You roll call?
Yes.
Final. Ram.
Sylvia, you're up.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
What was that?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, I gotta be true to what I am. I just gotta be fair.
I'm cool with it.
Yes.
You're getting it, so it's good.
Motion passes.
Thank you for your time.
Be with them and.
Great things are coming.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
You got a little more than ten dollars, Jake.
I was gonna pass a hat at the end of the meeting, too.
They'll still pass the hat.
Commissioners.
All right, man, you take care.
We have Commissioners here, additional three million, three hundred thousand, two consultants.
I think Barb's here somewhere, I just don't know where she's at right this second.
I think she was out in the hallway last. Three million, three hundred thousand for consultants, this is for, in reference to the bond, the jail and.
Correct.
Highway garage.
Correct.
Questions for?
Yeah, where are we at with things like drawings, what?
Highway and jail are right at the threshold of fifty percent design with estimates coming in, so we're on track on the, on the original schedule, things are moving along as, as planned, and things are moving quickly, so, on both projects.
Do we have an estimate where this garage is gonna land, it's been all over the place for a year now?
That was the last meeting where we were looking at that close to fifty percent design to get those costs dialed in. I don't think we have that dialed in right now, we're still working to get to the number we need to get to. I believe that, I believe that number is eighteen million, if I remember correctly, that eighteen million all in, so we're looking at that. The reason I'm hesitating is because internally, we divide the soft costs from the construction costs, and so, all in's eighteen million, and I believe on our last estimate, we were getting very close to being within our budget, our target budget on the garage, and we were, that's the, that was the meeting's purpose, was to go ahead and figure out where we were with the current estimate on the current things that had been reduced or modified, and I think, well, we're probably within thirty days of being able to come and say, right now, this is the current estimate by the Skoman Corporation, and this is what we're moving forward with, and this is the appropriate contingencies.
So what, leaving six, seven million for the jail, it was bond twenty-four, I'm sorry. So, we get into a phase two, I mean, if phase one of the jail is the, the roof and whatever else, phase two, then, I mean, do we have an estimate of what that potentially could be? I re, from going with this, Scott, is, if it's all, I mean.
Well, I think, one, yeah, the twenty-four and a half, whatever we ended up netting from the bond minus the maximum of eighteen million for the highway, if we're looking at phase two, we're going to also be dealing with the cap on one individual project, so you, the math is going to be, I believe that cap is around eighteen point three, so if we do it, when we do the second round, eighteen point three of that bond would, would be the maximum allowed towards the jail, along with the remainder from the first bond. That is what we are working towards at the jail side, we had that large meeting where we were, again, close to that fifty percent design stage and going through the things that have been graded A, Bs, and Cs, and going through those, and right now, we have a large number, but that's, we're in the process where that's what you do, you, if you're going for a twenty-four million dollar maximum, whatever the magic number is, at this stage, you should be at thirty million, because you're attempting to try to figure out what fits and doesn't fit. We're there now, and now we're whittling it down to the number we need to be, does that make sense?
For the jail?
The jail.
And that?
And the highway, the same scenario is happening, is just that we're bringing that down to the eighteen million.
And that will take care of all major work at the jail?
Well, I'll be able to give you a very good answer on that as soon as we finalize this list. Is it going to get every need done at the jail? No. Do I believe right now we're on track to get to the vast majority of the As? Yes, but again, I think we're probably thirty, on the jail, we're probably thirty to forty-five days away from being able to dial that all the way, and to be able to tell you, because I think, and this is frankly what I said in the meeting, wherever we draw the line because of the funding available, those things that fell below the line are the things we need to tell the council, hey, this didn't make the list because we need to be able to give you the flavor of where that line was drawn, and I'll use a crazy example. If the lot, we got the employee lounge put in, but we didn't get this, that gives you an idea of how far we got with the money. If we come back and say, we weren't able to upgrade the video equipment, then that's gonna give you an idea of where we got within the project itself. Everyone that's been out there knows it's a behemoth, it's very large, everything in a jail is very expensive, and you're also constructing it in one of the worst atmospheres, in a twenty-four hour a day, three sixty-five facility, so, what I can tell you is the process is proceeding like you would want it to proceed, all the players are at the table, everyone's got their, you know, sleeves rolled up, and they're attempting to get this whittled down to having as few as possible, I'll say, critical issues unresolved at this point. But, it's too early to say that we have one or two of those, or any, or five, because we're still figuring some things out, and this is frankly the stage in which, in all fairness to the administration at the jail and the Sheriff's Department, you know, they go through the original stage, and it's, I need this, and I need that, and I, this needs to move, and that needs to be redone, and there's no dollar amounts attached to the waves of the hands until you get to the meeting we just had, and then you can sit down and say, well, do you understand that this potential redo of, whether it's intake or the, or the food service, or, is costing this, and if that's the case, and you're comfortable with that, we'll move on. If not, this is the time, purposefully put in the schedule to go back and say, maybe we need to rethink this redo in this particular section. So that's, that's the process we're in at this point.
Is, I mean, the jail, I mean, the highway garage, we, a lot of conversation about it, I think originally it came out like fourteen, fifteen million, people freaked out, then Jim Biggs was going around here saying, nope, it's not gonna be more than eight, nine million dollars. Now we've doubled that, so, I mean, how did we get there? And is that, I mean, is that absolutely necessary for, you know, a garage, and you and I have talked a little bit about it, I.
Well, I think at this point, where we're at is that eighteen million obviously also includes the architect costs and the soft costs and the contingencies. I think we're probably closer to a fourteen, thirteen and a half to fourteen and a half million dollar actual construction cost. I can tell you, to get to, to get to our numbers, we've already had to do some cutting out of things, and things have gotten smaller, and again, some value engineering has occurred to try to make things go a little bit farther, so, at the end of the day, to get the required square footage at the highway, I mean, we're at a very high level, we're fighting the need of raw square footage against available. And so, whether that available, you know, whether that square foot is a garage, or cold storage, heated, or office space, ultimately, the need out there is so large, and the site's compact, so things are, are not as easy to move around, but I can tell you that we've already, you know, and the process will continue, because that eighteen million's a hard stop, and it's not just a hard stop because of the council, it's a hard stop because of the bond law, so, we have no choice but to get under that eighteen million dollars, and that's, and that's what's happening.
That, that is what I wanted to hear, that, that, because that's what the bond is for eighteen million, right?
The total bond was twenty-five, and of that twenty-five, only eighteen can be spent on any one project. The remainder of that twenty-five million dollars is being, is the first part of the jail money for the bond.
Okay, so, so you're asking tonight to spend six million, three hundred thousand?
So, I believe on your agenda, we have about three point. So, I believe on your agenda, we have about 3.3 million dollars, which I believe is what the commissioners, and that's what the commissioners' office calculated, as to be those costs for the architects, construction manager, the soft costs. That's what's going to the, pretty much, the, the design professionals on both projects, okay? And then the 3 million dollar, and I believe into contractual, is to start taking care of, we have a few things, obviously, when the plans are all completed and it's bid, it's gonna be done in public, it'll be opened in public, ordered in public, at which time, that's when we're gonna be coming back and saying, here's how much everything costs, and, and, and this is what things look like. In the meantime, there's a few things at the jail, um, and some site work, maybe at the highway, that, that 3 million dollars is there for these projects. But, again, the li, the reason why that's only 3 million at this point is, one of the arguments is that, until we bid it out, we don't need the rest of it allocated at this point. When we're bidding these out, most likely June and July and August, we will have hard numbers, and then also be able to estimate how much work is going to actually get completed in this fiscal year, and what would just, is gonna carry over naturally because of a construction cycle. And at that point in time, we can come back, share that information, and then decide how much to appropriate until we get, you know, for the rest of the year, things that we believe can be completed in that construction cycle.
So you do agree, then, that, uh, that's, that's the roof on this bond money? And that's what you're, you're going to stay within those, uh...
High, the highway project is capped at 18 million.
Well, I guess, the conversations go on, I, I guess, I just, when you said the need, you know, of the highway, just, we've talked about a little bit, is what, what is that need? Is mechanical space? I mean, are restoring how many vehicles? I mean, what is the true need of under-roof space? You know, um...
Well, I could, to give you a flavor, I mean, one of the things right now that I believe, on the last go-round, has come off the plan, is the cold storage. I believe that's one of the things that comes off. And there was, uh, uh, I think, weights and measures was planned on getting moved down there. I believe that office space has been removed out of the office space building. And I think the main garage in which, uh, there would be, uh, the staging garage, which was heated, uh, we had utilities in it, that's also been shrunk down to get to this number. So, I believe to your question, we started with what the department believed they needed and wanted to fully, uh, have an operational site. We've done that, we've got far enough in the planning and the estimating to figure out that was above our budget. So now, we're definitely in the process of whittling it back down to the hard cap.
Is there a wash bay still in there?
I don't remember. I, I don't remember it coming...
There is? Okay. My only concern about that was just because without the salt, it'd be nice to hopefully preserve those trucks for a little while, longer, by washing them down more. That, that was...
How about the, um, office space? If I remember, it was like 7,07200?
That has been shrunk down at this point. That was the, one, one of the things removed was weights and measures having an office there, so that was removed at, at a minimum.
They get a closet now.
Have we, and I know we're in, kinda in flux here with a, um, facilities director. You know, I think one of the things we requested in the middle of last year was to assess the rest of our facilities, so we know where we're at. If we were to go down the path of a second bond, it, it, what else do we do? JDC's been big. So it's, my concern is the first project out, this garage, is it gonna push us in a corner to not be able to do, like, the JDC, completely do the, the jail at the level it needs, and not be able to do the JDC, uh, in, to where we need, where... Those two facilities have people under roof, not vehicles. And I understand that the highway has, you know, employees, and that they have to work on vehicles, so I understand that. But, the liability, we've talked about this before, is greater at the other two, in my opinion, and...
Well, I think at this point, there would be, according to the direction, uh, that we're been headed, is that there's going to be a roughly 6 or 7 million dollars remaining, potentially, from that second bond of 25 million, to apply to those things. And there's, and I think in the universe of things that will probably be talked about for that 6 million is large, and my, probably not just JDC, there's, and I do believe, we do have a new facilities director, he's come online, um, and he's now with us and getting his feet wet. And I think he can start to undertake that, that original plan of deciding what things are happening and need to be done. I know, uh, been talking to the commissioners, there's been some talk about the rooftop unit on the courthouse here in Valparaiso. He's been working his way through that to figure out what that cost looks like, and whether that's something that is a little bit lower of hanging fruit, that we can tackle through a normal budget, or if it's something of a larger significance that needs to maybe be more of a capital expenditure. But, that is underway, uh, with our new facilities director. Now, and he's, he's a week or two on, so it's not that I'm trying to tell you that it's done.
I was gonna say, when's it gonna be ready?
Yeah, let's, let's...
Only been a week since we asked.
Well, and now we have a facilities director that can undertake your request. I'm not sure we did before.
And, well, visitor center, I know there's that argument back and forth. We, we really like to pretend it's not our building, but I'm certain it is. I mean, will that be looked at within all of our facilities, too? Do they really need a roof? And I know that they have a fund.
Oh, you're talking about the tourism?
Yeah.
Correct.
Oh, I would have to talk to the commissioners, I don't know if that's been added to that, that list. I think they've been primarily concerned about our core buildings, which would, goes back to your JDC, the courthouse here in Portage, this building.
Something with Nor, well, maybe our, um, auditor can speak to issues at North County building with, um, Red, you remember, some backup issues?
Yeah, plumbing issue, I believe, in the North County building.
And...
That's brand new.
Have you heard of that, Scott?
I have heard, uh, maybe it's a sewer line catch somewhere, might be the issue.
I mean, if it's a decent size, if it's something we can do, like you said, in a regular budget cycle, but it seems like there's something that needs to be addressed.
I haven't heard of that problem for a while, doesn't mean it hasn't happened. But, um, I do believe facilities at some point invested in the, uh, camera and the snaking equipment to be able to handle it without being a PM call. But, I can double-check on that and get back to you.
Any other questions for Scott? Okay, seeing none.
Make a motion, we, uh, do the additional 3.3 million dollars to consultants. Do we need two motions for each one, or...
Can we do these together, Karen? Separate?
Okay, that's, that's my motion.
You have a motion for the 3.3 additional?
Second.
Motion of second. Roll call?
Yes.
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 Okay, now we have an additional 3 million for contractual.
Uh, make a motion.
Second.
Motion of second. Any discussion? Seeing none, uh, roll call, please.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
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 And, um, this is our new facilities director, um, Joe Wazawati. So, he went with us today, and, uh...
So, uh, Joe Wazawati, uh, just started here on February 5th. I'm your new, uh, facilities director. I'm literally getting my feet wet.
Well, that's not good. Something's leaking.
Well, we're, we're, we're working on it. Um, but, you know, we're, we're learning a lot about the, uh, the buildings and, and the, uh, the conditions and stuff like that. So we are gonna be making a full assessment of all the, uh, county buildings, um, at the commissioner's direction. Uh, we will be, be making a full report to the commissioners and to the council at a future date.
Thank you.
Congratulations, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have next, uh, commissioners' general fund, Form 1, uh, 144, Facility Service Assistant, uh, $112.91 daily stipend?
We don't need that, I hired a new...
We've got a new...
Right.
Director.
I made that up, but is that true?
No, that's definitely true.
That's definitely true.
We, we do have a new facilities director, that, that part is true.
Right, so from the interim, from the period of January 9th to, uh, the period of when I started on January 5th, um, three individuals stepped up, um, and took over the responsibilities, as well as managing their existing roles. So the total, uh, amount would be for the additional compensation, for the additional responsibilities.
This is basically retroactive?
Correct.
So $112 a day?
Correct, for each.
For each and...
The tot, the total amount would be for $6,100.
How much more work did they pick up? That's a lot of money.
Like, I, I wasn't here to...
Were they working overtime?
Yeah.
Hourly employees?
Well, they, they are hourly, um, staff, so...
So are they getting overtime, then?
No, they weren't getting overtime for that.
Was just, this is just a clean split of the, the salary?
Exactly. That's all.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
You have a motion of second, discussion, um, I am going to...
I have a question, and it ends with this. That's, you know, we have the...
Well, I'm...
That's correct.
I'm just gonna share with the council, the world that I come from, if somebody leaves, the rest of the team picks it up.
Pretty normal.
Yeah.
I don't know who invented the stipends.
I don't know, but they're getting used a lot.
What's that?
They're getting used a lot. You're right, sometimes you have to pick up the ball and roll with it. And, and, it's just part of the job.
And I think, for whatever reason, we're getting into a habit of the stipends, you know, of, when, uh, depart, and it's nothing, this is, you're not unique to this, but other departments too, are getting into a habit to get shorthanded, and people have to step up. And we're paying people overtime. I mean, coming from the police world, by all I know, uh, you have a team of detectives, you have eight detectives, one leaves, retires, the other seven don't get extra money to pick up the extra caseload. So I don't know how this is even...
I mean...
Developing into a, it's kinda morphing into a...
A pattern.
Pounding nightmare.
That's right, if somebody leaves, they immediately chop up salaries.
Yeah, I think, uh, uh, I don't know where the council is with this particular one, but, you know, I would like to just, uh, again, this is just me saying to the rest of the department heads that this whole stipend or extra pay for, if somebody leaves, you know, uh, I don't know how that really got started, but, um, I, I just don't think it's a wise, uh, uh, financial pattern to be getting into.
I agree with you, Mike.
But, again, I'll leave it to the pleasure of the council to, 'cause I see we've got, uh, may have some more on here, and there have been some in the past.
I think we have...
And I think it's just time to try and address and see what we're gonna do as a council. This is a practice that, because once one department, and we start doing it, it becomes common practice. You know, at some point, we have to, uh, set some boundaries on this.
The only nuance I would add to your argument is that, to your argument about the detective's analogy, you're absolutely correct. I believe in this case, and in the, the other one you have on your agenda, we were, we weren't losing one of the rank and file, so to speak, we were losing the department head. So we were asking, uh, individuals to step up and take a role that wasn't necessarily in their normal wheelhouse to begin with. Whether that changes everyone's opinion or not, I understand. But, I believe the two I'm aware of are dealing with the department heads leaving, and people having to step up and do things that wouldn't be part of their normal days. Again, the example would be if, if we have two plumbers, one plumber leaves, I don't believe the commissioner's office and that department would be coming asking for a stipend for the plumber remaining. It would be, pick up what you can and get what you can get done in your hours, and if we have overtime working, and if we don't, don't. Um, this was, the only nuanced difference would be these, both of the incidences, um, are dealing with department heads being vacated, and then individuals needing to pick up that slack.
So instead of, in a situation like that, instead of putting in an interim director and paying them that salary, they basically picked up portions of that responsibility and moved forward with it. They did a really good job.
So, I think more...
I think it's the cost of doing business, um, and it's part of being, you know, kinda picking up the team effort. And I, and I do think that it's a, you know, I've had a conversation a little bit with the auditor that just trying to keep track of all this, is just like, give them, get a stipend for doing that, type of work, anyway, but...
If you're gonna give a stipend, pick one person, give a stipend, and let him be...
Yeah.
Not interim, but give him duties and, and, you know, but to split it across the board, I, that's what I don't care for, and I, and I hope we don't do it anymore.
Yeah, this is just me sharing with the council, it's the council's pleasure, but, yeah, I, I don't...
Can I ask a question? Were these people told they were getting this money? Or that it was pending our approval?
I, I would imagine it was pending approval, but I don't know that to be the case.
I don't know the answer.
I can get a plaque for, uh, recognition, I don't want some money, so... Yeah, and I appreciate what you're saying, but, you know, I think these stipends need to come to a halt. But up, but up to the council.
Mr. Biggs on that today, he says, they're, they're not gonna be on this agenda again, on our agenda again, so just as an FYI.
Yeah, I don't, did Commissioner Regnet's leave?
Oh.
I, she was here a second ago. Be a question whether she promised it or not, but my motion's still on the floor, I think there was a second.
Should we, we have a motion?
Man, Reavis did.
There's a motion of second, yeah. To approve, the 144.
Take a vote.
We have a second?
Yeah.
Yeah, Greg, second it, second it. Roll call, please.
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
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 Yes.
How many days was it, you know, what the total?
18.
18 days? Times that?
So is this, uh, we move now to the Form 144 for still, facilities coordinator, same scenario?
Have some fun, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion of second. Roll call?
No.
Yes.
No.
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 Yes.
No.
Well, let our employees know that we didn't appreciate them stepping up.
Welcome. Thank you, it was a pleasure meeting you.
Thank you, looking again, gentlemen.
Uh, veteran.
Good luck, sir.
Veteran.
What's up, man?
Well, mine's a little bit easier, I'm trying to give money away that I already have.
I'll take it.
Hopefully, you don't say no.
Yeah, tell, tell us a little bit about this.
Right. Okay, so this 2,748.52 is, uh, money that has been sitting in our donation fund for several years, way before I got here. Um, I saw it when I first started, I didn't know what to do with it, and I realized it's losing value. Um, earlier this year, I found out that the Young Marines Program from the Indiana Dunes, um, Marine Corps League, which is a youth program, was, uh, very short on funds. They couldn't do their annual leadership conference camping trip, and they couldn't do their annual trip to see a Cubs game in Chicago. So, um, instead of letting that money just sit there, this was a great opportunity to invest in our youth and the future of our community. And that's why I'm asking to donate this money to them.
Very good. I'd like to make a motion to donate this money to the, uh...
Do they need any chaperones to go to the Cubs game?
Actually, they always need volunteers, thing for me to fund the camping, but I, I don't like camping.
I will second it.
Can I ask a question? What kind of impact does this have on them? Still, uh, still trying to raise money, we need word out?
They always could use more money for their programs. Um, they, they're actually one of those, uh, organizations, it's from ages 12 to 18, and, um, they do a lot of the outreach events. They help out with like, you know, helping people park, or if someone needs assistance. Um, and these, these are all youth that are in this organization, and it's really great. They help out a lot with the stand-up.
Oh, we have a motion in a second?
Yeah, motion of second, any other questions? Roll call, please.
Semper Fi. Yes.
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 Thank you, everyone.
Good idea.
Take care.
Coroner.
Hello?
Welcome. We have an additional request, um, open from, for two thousand five hundred two dollars and twenty-four cents for a lease purchase. Uh, I believe this is for a, uh, two thousand and seven, replacing a transit van?
Yes.
Okay. Can you tell us a little bit about, um, the situation with the van?
I'd like, um, this is Brian Bowles, my chief deputy coroner, and he'd just like to kinda talk about everything before we get into the whole discussion.
Thank you.
I, uh, you know, kinda had a, I thought about it all night, so I dreamed all night about this meeting today, of course, so when I woke up, I was like, I'm gonna type some stuff out, so I don't forget a few things. Okay, sorry if I'm looking down. So, like I said, I'm, my name's Brian Bowles, for a couple of you that I haven't met. So, basically, as you know, we're requesting funds to replace, uh, one of our two aging transport vehicles. Uh, anytime we ask for money in our department, we know that we are not a revenue generating, you know, agency for the county, so we take it seriously. We're essentially asking to take money from a pot that we don't put into. We understand that, right? So, I get that it's, uh, it's a thing that we wanna do our duty, try to save money. We, of course, are gonna try to do as best we can with that. Uh, so today, we're asking funds to replace our two thousand and seven Ford Econoline van. Uh, it's served the county now for seventeen years. So, generally speaking, our coroner's office takes about four hundred and thirty cases a year. A rough estimate of those, about a hundred and seventy-five of them or so are seeing cases where we are using these transport vehicles, uh, which, you know, for that seventeen-year time, puts around two thousand nine hundred and seventy-five cases that this van potentially has gone to. Uh, that's a lot of calls with a lot of things in the back. The, we do own two vehicles, the other one is a two thousand and twelve, uh, and, you know, we're doing our best making both of these vehicles last as long as we can. Uh, I'm sure everyone in the room at one point or another has seen the vans. You can't miss them when you come around the first turn in the garage there, the, the big beastly thing sitting right on the corner. Uh, hopefully, I don't know if anybody's had an opportunity to go out and take a look at specifically the van that we are asking to, uh, change. Uh, I would say that if you did, uh, there's a chance you would say, man, it probably looks pretty good, right? Like, not, not in horrible shape. I would say, thank you. That van's seventeen-year-old, seventeen-year, seventeen years old, so that's a direct, uh, you know, that's a, that's a gratifying thing to hear that our deputies are taking that good of care of that vehicle the best we can to try to make it last that long. Uh, if you did get a chance to look at it, maybe didn't get a chance to get on the ground and look underneath it, that's where seventeen years' worth of age and Porter County weather, uh, is doing its, its damage. Uh, the van is rusting essentially from the bottom through. Uh, it is the, you know, the bumpers, quarter panels, undercarriage, it's creeping up into the body and door jams of the vehicle now. Uh, so basically, that's what is getting us to the reason why we are requesting to, to get rid of this van and to replace it. I think if I took a quick poll and asked anybody in here if they would put their son, daughter, wife in a seventeen-year-old vehicle that's two-wheel drive in a snowstorm to go pick up grandma from the nursing home on the hill, I don't think I'd get too many hands. I, I just, you know, it's not a safe situation for our deputies to be driving in this vehicle in the weathers, especially with the damage just to the van, as well as the ability for it to navigate in the weather as we've been trudging along with it. So, we're, you know, it's not just that, we, we want a respectable vehicle for the citizens of this county. We are often the last image that any possible, you know, member of our county could see driving away with their, their loved one in the back of that van, uh, to drive away in a rusty van, or a van that's running rough, or any of that, it, it's just, it's just not a good look. So, you know, we've, we've got some prices on different vehicles, uh, we've kinda come to the, the, I, I guess, the idea that this, uh, leasing option is probably gonna be maybe the cheapest, best route, you know, most nominally, the easiest option for us, uh, which is that fourteen thousand five hundred two dollars and twenty-four cents will allow us to get the vehicle and, um, that first year of the lease. Uh, it really does feel like a, a smaller ask, um, sitting on this side of the bench, of course, this side of the table, uh, when it comes down to the services we provide and wanting to be respectful and keep our deputies safe at the same time. Um, one last thing that's a little off-topic. In looking, uh, at these vehicles and looking at the equipment we carry and the things we have in the vehicle when we're considering what is gonna be needed for the new one, we noticed that we kinda had a bit of an oversight. Really, we have been ill-equipped in our vehicle, uh, for the last several years in our office. Uh, so, whether we get the new vehicle or not, we are moving forward, we're gonna start carrying nasal naloxone in our vehicles as well. So, the Narcan that our patrol officers carry, uh, throughout the county, throughout the police agencies, we are also gonna start carrying that. Which I know, right off the cusp, sounds like maybe a too little, too late situation for the coroner van, uh, but I can personally speak to scenes where we have responded to, um, the unfortunate overdose of opioid, you know, opiate drugs, and, and it's really unfortunately not an uncommon thing. Uh, as many of us know, those drugs can be absorbed through your skin, can be inhaled when aerosolized, disheveling or moving a scene, and particles can go in the air. Uh, so it could be a scary situation where maybe our deputies might need that Narcan, or even really make us, give us an opportunity to serve our community in a way that we never have, and the coroner's office have that handy now if a loved one, a family member, another first responder were to get exposed, and we would be able to prevent an overdose, which is probably never happened ever in the history of any coroner's office, for that matter. Um, so, we're gonna try to take a step in that direction to, as part of the, the solution of, you know, potentially being in that situation.
I'm just gonna, uh, share with the rest of the council, uh, I had a conversation with coroner, uh, Dykes, and, uh, she mentioned about the Narcan, and, uh, took, uh, and also some training, I believe, uh, Narcan training. Took this information, had a conversation with the auditor to see, cause continuously looking to be creative with funding to keep an eye on our general fund. And, um, under the circumstances, you know, with the information that the coroner said that this does qualify for the opioid, uh, funds, uh, to where we wouldn't have to take this out of our general fund, and, uh, since, you know, uh, there is funding available, uh, to, uh, proceed with the lease if, uh, if the council were to, uh, approve that. So, uh, um, there was that, those conversations, and again, trying to get creative with our funding, and, uh, looking at different options, and this came up, and, um, you know, so, again, uh, I think it's a creative way to, to try and get this older van that's, uh, to get it replaced.
How much?
Is the Narcan, is what qualifies, qualifies it to be used?
Aren't these people?
Oh, the training, too?
Training, yes.
And that's from the opioid money, not, not to be used for the actual van itself?
I know.
I, listen, I think the Narcan's a good-
For the van, so, how much of that money from the opioid would be for the van? If the, uh, it's what, fourteen thousand five oh two for a year, is that correct?
That's per year.
How much would that be for, uh, from opioid money? Bah, oh, great, I'm not sitting next to you anymore. Opioid money, uh, would be going toward the van for the fourteen, would you get the whole fourteen or part of it?
At least, the lease amount will come from the opioid funds.
Catchy.
Yeah, it's a tough one.
Yeah, well- It would catch you, so we would get a free year, basically?
From the general fund, correct?
From the general fund.
That's not bad. But, in regards to, in regards to your, your question about vans, you know, and the condition of it, I can tell you, two councilmen were actually out there looking at your vans.
Okay.
And, and one of them was on the ground with a flashlight, looking at the vans, and, yeah. I gotta tell you, that, they're really, the two thousand and twelve, I, I, it's, it's in pretty good condition. The van, uh, the two thousand and seven, uh, overall, looking at it, I saw a little bit of rust on the wheel well, what you were talking about. Uh, myself and, uh, Councilman, uh, Sims went out there, and they, he also, uh, was very proactive in this regard and looked at it the inside, and I, we had, had the, uh, coroner, not the auditor, the coroner, start up the van, and it sounded pretty good. It showed him a little trick that if you could pull the dipstick out, and you pull it on the hand on your oil like that, it feels gritty, that tells you you're losing your motor, okay? So, that's one way to do that, it's an old mechanic's trick, I'm old and somewhat of a mechanic, so that counts.
I, I do wanna give our, I mean, we have some stellar mechanics at our garage, like, those guys are, they're, they're amazing, so...
But, the only thing I gotta say about the two thousand and seven van is, could, could it, could it go another year? Yeah, but, we do have a concern where the leaf spring is. This comes off your bracket where the leaf spring is, okay, that, that brown piece like that. I was looking at it with my flashlight, and I touched it, and this piece fell off.
I thought that was beef jerky.
Yeah, he was, but-
Ask me this.
But, uh, and I understand your concern, uh, about the rust that's under there, but could we get by with the van for another year? Yes, we could, but if it's free money for a year-
It's, it's not the point of free money, here, here's, here's my take on this.
Okay.
The two thousand and twelve is thirty-eight thousand six hundred four miles, the two thousand and seven has only sixty-one thousand miles on it. The ma- I've talked to the mechanics, I went over there, they got brand-new tires, brand-new all-terrain, all-weather tires, brand-new brakes. The cars are, the vans are mechanically sound.
Yes.
They pick up dead people, okay?
Hey, you know what? Wow. You know, let me just say something real quick.
Excuse me?
Time out, time out, time out, time out, time out. As somebody who has put both their mom and their dad, and it was either the two thousand and seven or the two thousand and twelve, they do pick, and, and I know you didn't mean that-
You didn't, you didn't let me finish my sentence. They are aesthetically fine as well, on the outside. They, you say, you know, you're saying that's the last thing people see, there's nothing wrong. Matter of fact, you had one in the parade, what, two years ago, throwing candy out.
It was the-
It looks fine.
The twelve, not the two thousand and seven.
They're mechanically sound, they're aesthetically pleasing, there's nothing wrong with them.
Can I ask, can I ask this question? What constitutes the need for a new county vehicle?
Let me ask, let me, did, um, the conversation we had, you spoke, was there a mechanic out there, Butch?
Mm-hmm.
And Dave.
And the-
We had, we had, uh-
The conversation that we had is that when Butch put some tires on-
We had to have a tire replaced.
Yeah, and then he informed you that the under-
Mm-hmm.
Is rust-
Was, was in, in bad shape, and-
Off the road.
In the near future, it could be very unsafe to drive. So, should we wait? Should, should we wait until that van is unsafe to drive? Or should we be proactive and, and lock these, lock this cost in place for the lease?
I think that's-
I think I'm just answering a question, I think what constitutes, she got advice from the county mechanic.
Why is it that my advice and the same mechanics is different than her advice, the same mechanics? That, that's the, the interesting.
First I've heard you talk-
Because you don't answer my calls or texts.
Oh, gentlemen.
Okay.
What I'd like to know is, mechanic actually told you, did you, or her?
He, it, he advised us that the undercarriage was-
Unsafe to drive.
Not, not right now, but in the near future, it could be unsafe to drive because the undercarriage is rusted. And it's going up into the wheel wells now, up into the doors, and that's why I'm concerned because we can't afford to not have two vans for our department. Sometimes we have back-to-back calls.
How often?
Calls.
How often?
We don't keep statistics, but just last and this week, we've had to transport two bodies at the same time. If that deputy, because we only have one deputy on call for a twelve-hour shift, if they would've gotten a third scene call that a body needed transported, we would've had to use the second van to go help them.
But you didn't have that happen yet. We, we have not been in a place where both vans were needed at the exact same time, so-
But it could very easily happen.
We have often been in a, a place, though, where a van is out of service, uh, for mechanical repairs and such, where we only have the one van, and it is a, it, it's really dire straits, um, like, it's-
I'm just gonna say something, I think that, um, you know, to comment on things that you're, really have no idea what you're talking about, unfamiliar with, I mean, we have a mechanic, it's an oh-seven van, you know, did you go out, I know that Sheriff, Sheriff Ballamy in your car, are you the official car inspector?
Nope.
On his request to go look for if he needs a car replaced? Mr. Plarick leads a hatchet, have you looked at his old one before he got rid of it, to see if that's a legitimate-
But it's, it's, it's our job to make sure that the funds are being appropriated.
It's our job also to provide our department head with tools they need to do their job safely. And, um, you know, Cindy's not a mechanic, but she's taken the advice of a mechanic.
And so was I, the same exact mechanic.
But, uh, I think we need to separate personal feelings from, you don't know anything about what she does, I, I-
This can undo a feelings, we're talking about a vehicle. That's all we're talking about, emotions don't exist in this, it's facts.
I'm just saying-
It's a sixty-one thousand mile vehicle that's in good shape, it does its job, it hasn't broken down yet. Now, maybe if it was broken down, everything else, that's a completely conversation, and I would welcome it. But when I, when I look at it, I, I've inspected it, it seemed very adequate, the mechanics who I talked to said it was fine. I'm, I'm trying, and brand-new tires, brand-new brakes? I'm just having a hard time understanding why, right now, you need a van that does not seem like it's necessary. That's all I'm saying.
Councilman Sims?
Yeah. Mr. President, I have a, um, a comment on this, and it's not regards to the van, I haven't seen it, I don't know, I'm, I'm hearing this stuff going back and forth, but my thing, again, we're talking about spending opioid money, I said it right, and I think that that should go in front of the committee, I think this is a perfect example of, this is why we formed the committee, that's not a-
I thought we just capped it off after the last vote, but apparently-
I voted no for that.
Brought them in front of us on this.
Well, that was a, Jeremy, this came up before, right after we capped it off, so, and you, and you know, well, because we talked about it, it could've went, would you say CCD, it could've went opioids?
Well-
Trying to take it not from the general fund, quite frankly, I would take it from the general fund right now.
Well, I mean, if we're gonna start-
Why do you think-
Buying vehicles out of the general fund.
Look at schools, what do they have? Ten-year bus replacement plan.
Yeah.
Every school, ninety buses, they, they, they go because they have all the, the rust on the underbody. I mean, are we gonna wait for something to go down and, and be, but this is not high mileage.
Have you talked to the commissioners?
High mileage, plus they have-
Did you guys talk to the commissioners?
Yes, I, I've sat down with the commissioners, actually, I, I, this is my third attempt for a van.
And they told you to go to the council and find the funding?
They asked me to get the funding from the council first, and they're encouraging the lease.
I mean, how many, Madam Auditor, do you know how many vehicles we have in this county? And we, we start purchasing two hundred and ninety-six vehicles out of the general fund, you know? That's why I asked how many vehicles we got in the county, looking at the big picture. If we start buying vehicles out of the general fund, it, we could probably run into a problem real fast. I mean, do we have a list of all the vehicles, who has them, who's using them? I mean, who's, who's replaced them in the past? It'd be nice to share, if you don't mind.
I just got it, I just got it. I was asking a question, just trying to get a handle, trying to get a handle on, uh, county vehicles.
And we have-
Yes.
As far as the opioid money, uh, that's, that process, this is not a nonprofit organization coming, I guess that, I look at it, it's a different situation, this is a county department, and this is county, you know, uh, the funding, um, I hear what you're saying.
Authority on it, but I still feel it should go through the same process, in my opinion.
Opioid was for a specific reason, I mean, it's a settlement for, you know, epidemic in this country. I mean, we start using it as a, as a bank account, you know, to purchase things here and there that we think will fit, then we're missing, we're missing the point of why we got the settlement in the first place.
But I think there's opioid restricted and unrestricted, and I think we've used the unrestricted and other things. I don't know what, but I-
It's all, it's all for the same purpose, they put unrestricted, yeah, I mean, to open it up a little bit, but-
It's not all for the same purpose, the unrestricted is, can be used for anything, and the restricted has, there has to be parameters.
Well, I think we're gonna disagree on that, it was from a settlement of, of a, you know, a drug epidemic in this country. I, I don't think we should be going out and, you know, buying vehicles and stuff, we could go out and save lives with it, that's the point of the settlement. We could go out and save lives with it, that's the point of the settlement.
Jeremy, I think we can both agree on that, I'm just saying there was two funds, a restricted and a unrestricted. And I think we had used some unrestricted funds from, for other stuff.
Which is true.
That's all I'm saying, you know?
And, again, this fits within the category, and I don't know if there's, I mean, when you have a, a department linked to do Narcon training and equip themselves with Narcon, I, I don't know how much more important.
Our health department already does it.
So does our schools, our, our, our schools do what the health department does. Everybody overlaps on things, Greg.
No, what I'm saying is, instead of, I mean, the health, have you guys worked with the health department at all for this Narcan? They can play, they have.
No, we don't, we don't need to because I have a deputy that is, um, certified trainer and she has.
I'm talking about the, they can provide the Narcan to you, you don't have to buy it.
I'm sure they could, we don't have to buy it.
We wouldn't be buying it.
We wouldn't be buying it.
You just wanna use the opioid, qualify the opioid money for this purchase because you got Narcan in the vehicle?
So I have personally been at a scene, quite literally where.
No, I'm, I'm just saying, this is how you're qualifying.
No, but I feel like it is getting diminished a little bit, so I kinda wanna say that, like, I have personally been standing in the room of a, of a person who was overdosed, while a, a police officer was helping me move this person, the blanket and over that person moves, things go into the air that are powdery. We find out, literally moments later over the radio, that it gets field-tested, that it is fentanyl. Like, we have three ambulances coming, we're getting out of the room, like, all of us are a little freaked out, none of us are, you know, we don't know what it is until we know. That could've gone so bad, so many different ways. So, yes, we are recognizing a need and taking advantage of that opportunity.
I think you're doing a great thing regardless if it gets paid from the opioid restricted or the unrestricted. Having the Narcan on you guys, I think's a great thing, personally.
Yeah, I mean, you understand we have a CCD fund, right, cumulative capital development, and we really need to get a handle on our vehicles and, you know, what departments have them, replacement of them?
Jeremy, we've talked about, apparently we got a list, and I didn't even know we got a list. Talked to the commissioners and I believe if they, do we?
What happened is, we got the list January twenty-seventh because we're working on our current asset list and our yearly report for the gap. Prior to that, it was questionable, and of course, you have during the year changes, um, but we have a substantial amount of things that have been purchased from vehicles, all the way down to equipment within the county. We had to take in consideration any type of, um, land that we had, buildings, all of that had to be redone and recalculated to make it current for our new report.
Oh, thank you.
My concern is this, uh, as well as, uh, Mr. Sims, Councilman Sims, is that, uh, mechanics gave two different opinions to two different people. I, like I said, I was under that van, as you well know.
Mm-hmm.
And I had a flashlight and I was looking at it. I only went, unfortunately, as I'm sitting here thinking, from the, uh, middle to the back end, and I did see, as a matter of fact, I had rust in here and I was showing it to everybody. Uh, you mentioned it, Councilman, uh, Sims, it was his present for the night. Can't breathe and talk at the same time, I just learned that. Um, but, to my point, what I'm looking at is, uh, the hard part for me is that, granted, I, I think you could get by another year, but we also get a free year from the opioid money.
Also, it's gonna, eight months to get, if, even if we bought a van tomorrow, it's gonna take nearly a year for us to get it.
So, we could get the van, we could put an order in and basically by the time we got it. It would, we would already have eight months in, and then you would have this year's price for the van that's coming.
And we'll, we'll have, we'll have this price locked in. I mean.
Well, you're still gonna be using the 2007, it's not something that's gonna happen in three days or.
No.
Something like that.
For the lead time, no, because we have a two thousand seven van, which is what we say seventeen years old.
Yes.
Year lead time, so if we wait a year, that's really two years, so now we have a nineteen-year-old.
Yes, that van will be able to vote next year, yeah.
Okay.
So if we bought a new van.
Makes a little diff.
Have a van with, what, twelve years old and kind of cycle them out, hopefully within maybe L.
Yeah, and, and with the in.
Cycle goal.
Yes, and with the information that I received from the mechanic when we got our tire replaced, it makes me a little nervous. I don't know the lifespan of this van now. I don't know when, I don't know who's gonna tell me I can't, we can't drive it anymore. So do I wanna wait until that day comes and then we're down to one van? And then if we need repairs on the van that we have, we can't go to a rental place and go, hey, we need a corner van that can hold two cots and all of this equipment. They don't have those there. I can't do it. I have to be prepared, and I'm trying to be proactive in this because of the information that I received.
So, yeah, Sylvia, absolutely.
So, from what I understood, from what Karen's auditor said, it's going to, this opium unrestricted fund will pay for one year? Okay. Who's, then, where is it going to go? Who's going to pick it up to pay for the rest? Where would that come from?
Well, we can also get out of the restricted fund, it qualifies under the restricted fund also, which we have more money in.
We can also address it at budget season.
Which would mean it would fall back into the general fund? Or could it go to the?
Put a CCD, it could go to any different number of places, that's.
Okay.
We could address it at budget time, but this would take care of just this.
Yeah, we're trying to not do too much in the general.
Right, exactly, that's why I'm asking the question.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I, I can understand now why you are saying that you are even addressing the opioid unrestricted fund because of maybe the exposure that you might get in a.
A hundred percent, ma'am.
That makes more sense.
Mm-hmm.
A hundred percent.
Those are the two things that I was thinking about.
I just think, I think it's a, it's a, I don't know, to me, the opioid money is, it's a settlement from a, you know, we, we should be going out there and figuring out how to tackle this epidemic that's out there. The CCD fund currently has a balance of two-point-two million dollars in it. You don't have to mention what they get annually, that's just extra that they're sitting there and they're, you're told to come to us for this, and then we're gonna find creative ways to use the settlement money. We start buying vehicles with this money, to me, it's the, there's two-point-two million dollars extra in CCD.
She didn't solicit it, we talked about finding a way to, you know.
Hit the general fund.
To hit the general fund.
CCD.
This was, you know, this is money that's available, it couldn't be, I don't think it'd go to a better use, um, but that's just, in my opinion, we, you know.
Yeah.
We have this money available, but, uh, it sounded like it made sense.
Buying vehicles with the settlement money doesn't make sense.
I didn't realize you were on the council to make this decision, Madam Auditor.
Well, this, you know, she's the auditor and she goes.
I understand that, but it, it's our decision.
I could've said that to you.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we make the additional fourteen thousand, five hundred, two dollars and twenty-four cents, let's see where it goes, um, to make the first year lease purchase on a new corner van.
We have a motion.
That's from the opioid money.
That'd be from.
The opioid money.
From the opioid unrestricted money.
We have a motion on, I'll second it. Second? Further discussion?
I really think that it should go through the committee, I, I just wanna re, re, uh, put my opinion back out there, that's my thought, it should go through the committee and it should pro, and I don't have a problem with you guys doing it if the committee's on, on board with it, but that's my thought.
Brechner?
Yes. Yes.
Graham?
I'm going to vote no because of the same reason, it should go to the opioid committee.
No.
Ozak?
No.
Vasquez?
No.
Rivas?
No.
Okay, we have, uh, any of this, uh.
I, I would ask you to go to the commissioners.
Exactly.
Please, there's two, they have a CCD fund, we, we have a lot of vehicles.
Okay, I, all I, all I did was I, I talked to the commissioners first, they wanted me to come to the council. If I had the money approved, then they would approve the contract. That was how they directed me.
Could you please say to them from the council, suggest that, uh, they do look at, at it from the CCD fund? Or your, this fourteen thousand van?
Okay, I can do that.
Um, you have an additional four thousand, five hundred for other equipment, reimbursement grant award from the Indiana Department of Health.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, a second. Uh, roll call, please, any discussion on this?
Stone?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Ozak?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Brechner?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
EMA. EMA additional three thousand to other equipment, EMA donation fund appropriation needed to purchase workout equipment. An expensive thigh master.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion?
I've, yeah, we should, I was kind of wondering what this was all about, but would you please tell them how.
Sure.
Got this money?
Yeah, we, we recognize that we wanted to give our responders a place to work out in order to stay in shape, reduce the chances of injuries, while at the same time, a lot of our, uh, first responders are volunteers. So it also gives them an opportunity to be in the building, which shortens then our response time if there is a call-out. So the, the volunteers for two years now have had fundraisers, sold butter braids, sold memorial bricks to raise this money. So this wasn't money that anybody else had given us, they raised this money with the purpose of being able to purchase this equipment so that they'd have this area to work out in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So it's basically money that you raised yourself?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion, oh, you did it.
Yes.
Yeah, we motioned and seconded.
Uh, roll call?
Go.
Any other questions for Lance? Oh, roll call, please?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Ozak? Vasquez?
I actually had a question if there was anybody braids left, but yes.
And yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Yes. Thanks, Lance. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Lance.
Yep. Animal shelter, animal shelter donation fund additional fifty-eight thousand, six hundred fifty-six dollars. Uh, is this one of the, just one of those.
Yeah, it looks like it.
Kind of cleaning.
Come up.
Just one of the cleanups from last year for the animal shelter.
So this was from last month?
Right.
Yes, where it was put into the wrong fund, advertised last month, and so this is putting it into the wrong fund.
Okay.
Yep. Last, the budget cleanup.
All right, thank you.
Make a motion, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion, a second. Uh, any discussion? Roll call, please?
Graham?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Ozak? Vasquez?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, hang on.
Del probation. We have a reduction from the general fund. Reduction in salaries for two new officers, promotion for existing employee and vacancies. Okay, I don't know, I don't know what's going on here.
You got two reductions and one increase, looks like.
Okay.
So you're taking salary from someone and giving it to someone else?
So what's happened is we have.
Gonna speak.
Two senior officers that left, that were paid at a certain pay rate. We've hired in two new officers that are less officers, they get paid less money, that's the reduction. We had a pre-trial supervisor who left our department. That position comes with a five-thousand-dollar stipend for the supervisory, uh, responsibilities. We've replaced that person with an internal person, so we are just asking that that five-thousand-dollar stipend be applied to that existing employee.
Okay.
So that's the change in those dollars.
And this is, uh, coming from the general fund?
It's a reduction. It's a reduction.
Yeah, but.
All right.
We could.
Do we do these individually? Karen, these reductions?
Correct.
I make a motion, we do the.
Second.
Sixteen thousand, seven ninety-three.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Yes.
Um, moving money, roll call, please?
Graham?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Ozak? Vasquez?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Brechner?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Six zero.
Okay. And we have, uh.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the twenty-three thousand dollars in reduction, twenty-three thousand, one oh six.
Second.
Motion, a second, on the next reduction.
We jumped to the next.
Yeah, should we do the Form one forty-four?
Oh, Form one forty-four, we.
I make a motion, we do the Form one forty-four.
Form one thirty-nine thousand, six hundred twelve, are these the, these are what you were talking about, these difference?
It corresponds to that reduction.
Okay. Any questions here on the one forty-four?
Is that the motion that they were wanting to make?
No.
We had to do the.
One forty-four?
The one forty-four, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, we need a roll call, please?
Sims?
Yes.
Ozak? Vasquez?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Brechner?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Vasquez, six zero.
Okay, now we can go down to the next reduction, and is this?
Motion to approve.
Same thing?
Yeah, for two, that's the twenty-three thousand, one oh six.
Make a motion, we, uh, have, accept the reduction at twenty-three thousand, one oh six.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, on the next reduction, any discussion? Roll call, please?
Ozak?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
I heard reduction.
Yes.
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Yes.
And another one, Form one forty-four, seventeen thousand, one fifty-eight to zero balance, okay? This is all correspondence with this, uh, motion.
So, Mr. President.
We have a motion, we have a second on the Form one forty-four.
Second. Second.
We have a second, couple, uh, roll call, please?
Vasquez?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Brechner?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
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 Seven zero.
Okay, then we have a, uh, Form one forty-four, thirty-eight thousand, nine fifty-one, del probation, community corrections, pre-trial grant fund.
So we're just changing the officer that's being paid that salary, so that's why you see thirty-eight thousand down to zero and the zero up to thirty-eight thousand.
Not giving anything back and not taking anything away.
Nope, but they are grants.
So there's no, no addition of employees?
No.
No.
Are you just moving it from grant?
We're just changing the person that's being paid.
Oh.
That salary, that's all.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to accept.
And.
We have a motion, a second, on Form one forty-four, for the grant fund, roll call, please?
Brechner?
Yes.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Ozak.
Yes.
Vasquez.
Sure.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
E nine one one.
Thank you.
Make a motion. Thanks for waiting.
Additional motion, do we have a second?
I second that.
We have a second on this additional. Any discussion, any questions?
Yeah, so slow, you won't have to.
Get out of here, you won't even have to.
It's cake.
Roll call, please.
Stone.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
Have a good night.
Warm water?
Have a good night.
Middle Bridge Fund, Form one forty-four, highway engineer, twenty-five hundred dollar stipend. Highway engineer manager. Second half of stipend for twenty twenty-four. They are splitting the duties of, from the director with five employees with the funds that he split up three separate funds.
Yes, hello. Um, so first of all, before I get started, I have Mike Jabo, our interim director, here with me. So I will let him introduce himself after we get through this. But, um, so these stipends, these are before you, as you will recall, at your October twenty-fourth meeting, you approved the first half of the stipends for twenty twenty-three. That was from September twenty-ninth, when our previous director left, to mid-December. Now these stipends are for that mid-December to mid-February to help cover the duties of the director. So the total stipends that are in front of you this evening, total of all three funds, is seven thousand, five hundred dollars. I would like to point out that this is not going to be any additional money. It's actually going to be, I guess you'll call it as savings, because the salary of that director for the three-month period for twenty twenty-four would have been twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. Like I said, these stipend totals are only seven thousand, five hundred dollars, so a saving of eighteen thousand dollars. So the stipends are to help cover the significant additional workload that these employees had to carry. Federal reports for our bridges, reviewing the bridge inspection reports and approving those, which the director previously did, and then also serving as executive director of the plane commission. That way the approval of our developments could continue to move forward. So, uh, making sure that we don't lose very significant, important federal money for the funding of our bridges. That way we don't have to close down any more bridges in the future. And then also continuing to move through with the development review process, which the director was responsible for.
So these are just temporary, these were stipends, and now that you're hired, they're not going to be paid anymore, is that?
That is correct. So these are only temporary, like I said, the first half was approved for twenty twenty-three at your October meeting, with the understanding that there would be a second stipend approved at the twenty twenty, for twenty twenty-four, or the first quarter of twenty twenty-four. So.
Were you here at the beginning of the meeting?
I was. I've been here all night.
But these are previous.
The difference one, we knew these were coming.
Yes, and to be honest with you, I wasn't even aware that this had to be presented to you again for twenty twenty-four. I would have had this on the January agenda if I would have known that, but here we are today.
So, we're paying, we're paying this for, what is the timeframe that we're paying this stipend for?
Uh, so that would be mid-December twenty twenty-three to mid-February, a few weeks ago, twenty twenty-four, once we
And now it's going to go away and never come back?
That is correct. It will never come back, unless if we have another director leave.
Don't say that.
No.
Never know.
Had a good, good one here.
So this difference, I guess, is this like grand file already?
That's how I'm seeing it. I'm going with that, because we knew about it, but they talked to us before they did it, and that was the helpful part.
That was the helpful part.
Right. We knew about it beforehand. We told them it's okay to do this. Personal opinion.
Yep, I agree.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none.
You got motion already?
Now do we have a motion?
Oh, can I make a motion for all one forty-fours, or you want them separate?
Let's do them all.
I move to approve all Form one forty-fours.
Second.
Can we do them all together, Karen?
Yeah.
We have a motion, a second, uh, vote on all of these one forty-fours. Roll call, please.
Stone.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
So, yeah, what, are you full-time, or are you?
Uh, the arrangement is, I'm on an hourly rate base, I'm sorry. I'm on an hourly rate basis as needed, as an interim. I've been putting in a few hours during the week, but not exceeding the thirty-five, of course, but sometimes it's less, and then it's till such time they find a suitable replacement for the director. And then they have to turn to the duty at hand to get another engineer, senior engineer, uh, after Mike and Bob both left, so you may be seeing me again.
So you're just filling in as a, as a contractor?
I'm a contract employee.
Contract employee, until, is there a search? They're non right now?
The engineers are actively searching, and the hope is, hopefully by end of March, they could have someone in place. It's hard to say. It's a pretty competitive market out there right now.
Yeah, we knew what we had. Some of us.
Well, welcome aboard.
Thank you. It's a pleasure. I'll be talking to you again.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, what was your name?
My name's Mike Jabo.
Mike, nice to meet you.
Steve. I just thought I'd help you out.
Yeah, you do got to help me with pronunciation.
I would.
Good night, guys. Nice to meet you. Welcome aboard.
We have an additional, um, one million, eight hundred fifty thousand. Appropriation needed for annual chip and seal. We have another additional for seven thousand for equipment. Appropriation needed to purchase a total patcher. And, uh, we do those two, Karen, or again, I keep wondering if we can do them one at a time, or can we do the two? I'm sorry.
Do it together?
Together, the two additionals.
Well, I mean, probably two different things, though. I mean, I would, I would ask you to do them separate.
You want to do them separate?
I'll make a motion to approve the one million, eight hundred fifty thousand for
Second.
We have a motion is second on the first additional. Uh, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Graham.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Stone. Seven zero.
Six zero.
Stone's out.
There's no, no stone.
I'll make a motion on the fifty-seven thousand.
Second.
New patcher.
We have a motion is second on the second one. Any discussion?
No, that sounds awesome.
Yeah, is this your perfect vehicle that you'll never need another one?
All roads are fixed now.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I sent you all videos, I don't know if you're able to see them.
Great.
Yeah, from twelve, twelve years ago about the elegant.
Well, it was old. We had a great discussion. But, uh, one thing I want to point out, you know, that Hitachi excavator, uh, we sold that at auction, because we bought a, a newer model, and we were offered thirty-eight thousand for a trade-in. And the commissioners approved sending it through Crafts Online Equipment Auction with a reserve on it, and he ended up getting his fifty-seven thousand for it.
Wow.
So.
Yeah.
Very good.
That's great.
That's good.
Here for Craft.
Alright, and so you're just replacing the same piece of equipment? Jim, you're just replacing the same piece of equipment?
No, no, the, the total patcher is a whole new piece of equipment. That, I was just mentioning about the, uh, the excavator that was in our five-year equipment replacement plan.
That's where we have.
That's where the, uh,
We're talking about something that's not on the agenda.
Wait a minute.
There, what you were talking about is not on the agenda.
As far as selling the piece of equipment?
I, it doesn't.
Yeah, the total patcher, I mean, is this something new, Jim, that?
Yes, that is a new piece of equip-
New piece of equipment we've never had. I mean, what, so what? Why in this direction, what?
Uh, the purpose of that piece of machinery is to help fix roads. What it does is it actually makes a hot emulsion patch. Instead of just keeping throwing cold patch in all these holes, and I'm sure you're all aware, sometimes you'll patch them and a week later, that same hole reappears. We can actually go in there, put a hot emulsion mixture in that hole and make a permanent repair to it. Also, other places we can use it are on our chip seal roads, on some roads where we currently would have to go in and grind them up and relay them all out. We can go in, fix the bad spots on those roads, and then do a single layer of chips over it. So every mile that we do that to, it saves us about twenty thousand.
Good.
Cost of not having to double chip that road and just doing a single chip to it. So, last year we spent seventy thousand dollars on cold patch. So it won't take long to recoup the cost of this piece of equipment.
We have a motion.
I watched the nine-minute video. I was impressed.
Yeah, it was pretty cool.
Not of the video quality, but, uh,
Not of video quality, but of actual machine.
Motion approved.
Good. Second.
We have a motion, and a second on the additional. Roll call, please.
Sims.
Yes.
Ozak.
Yep. Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
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 Graham.
Yes.
Okay. Now we have a transfer, sixty thousand from motor vehicles to other equipment. This is for, pay the balance?
Correct, yes, to the, for the balance of the
Second.
Second.
We have a motion, second on a transfer. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All's opposed. Seeing none, motion carries. Great.
I'll make a motion on the mansion grant.
Second.
We have a motion is second.
For both of them.
Additional three hundred thousand.
For both?
Good.
I second both of them.
First and, first and second.
Second if you need it.
Third. Well, seeing, uh, do a roll call on the first one, Karen, additional for three hundred thousand.
Yes.
Ozak.
Yep.
Vasquez.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Brinkner.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Carries, now we have another additional, three hundred thousand.
I make a motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Roll call, please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Porter County Sheriff.
Have a good night, Jim.
We have a drug task force fund, additional twenty thousand to motor vehicle, for, uh, purchase of HIDA vehicle. Okay, any discussion, any questions on this?
I don't know what it is.
I'm sorry?
What, what are you buying?
Uh, the
Vehicle.
Vehicle for, uh, HIDA, drug trafficking, twenty thousand.
For our drug unit.
This is
Additional.
So PC Meg is our drug unit, Porter County Multi Enforcement Group. HIDA is who funds our drug unit.
Right.
So they lease vehicles for us. This is to, one of the leases is up, so we're going to purchase it through our money for a new vehicle for our drug unit.
And then they will reimburse us monthly.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Uh, roll call, please.
Vasquez.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Brinkner.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
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 Very good, uh, forfeiture proceeds for an additional thirty thousand, other equipment for us to be at voice stress analysis.
What the heck is that? What's that do? Tell us, is it a lie? It, uh, long story short, it measures your vocal cords, and it show, when you have stress, it's different than when you just start to talk.
I'd like for you to bring that here one day.
A lie you tell.
I don't want.
Jeremy, could you, could you use that?
I've taken three of them in my life.
Is there a laugh that we should know about here, Sylvia? Oh, fishing, okay.
You was putting the weights in the fish. I saw her on the news.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Carter, Jeremy?
That was the rule.
Yeah, I'd love, I'd love for us to be able to hook some of these council members up.
Why are you looking at me, Jeremy?
So would I, Jeremy, so would I.
Yeah.
We have a motion on this?
Yes.
Motion is second.
I second.
We have a motion is second. Uh, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Very good, public safety data.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Additional protein for the cost of a gas or oxygen, you know, we have a motion?
Yes.
Second.
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 Roll call. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad you guys hung out.
Okay.
Take care.
We now
Just in time for the tornado.
We already took care of the last thing.
That's second.
Second reading.
Uh, second reading, general fund, reduction of sixteen thousand, ninety-three, motor vehicle highway. By two minutes, one million, eight hundred fifty thousand, other unrestrictive contractual probation user fees, reduction salaries of twenty-three thousand, six, first
The real answer?
Thousand, animal shelter donations, early fifty-eight thousand, six hundred fifty-six. Veterans donation fund, two thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty cents. EMA donation, other equipment, three thousand, E nine one one donation, other supplies, three thousand. Twenty twenty-three GOVON consultant, three million, three hundred thousand, contractual, three million. Public safety data tech rentals
They're saying the right
thousand, three hundred. DEA forfeiture, equipment, three thousand, ninety-three dot, first six F Y D, F Y grant, other equipment, four thousand, five hundred. L R P C C M G aggregates, three hundred thousand, by two minutes, three hundred thousand. Second. Second.
Thank you. Uh, any other matter that may come for the council? Anybody have anything to share with the group?
I would like to say that it was unfortunate, in my opinion, that we had two different assessments from the same mechanics, which put such a... Which i- i- it just made the decision very hard in regards to the coroner's van. That's all I'd like to point out.
Go to the first one.
Thank you.
I mean, what would have been nice is if a mechanic were to come here and...
Come here.
In front of us. That would be the, probably the best thing to do.
Yeah.
Quite honestly.
We were discussing it in the hallway and she asked for my advice. I said, get it inspected, get us a report telling us what's wrong with it.
Well, it would be nice if one of our own that sees them...
Get it from them then.
Again, why, why too? I can't tell you. I, it, 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 it's interesting, though. You're right. Right.
I would just like to comment on the report that Karen gave us tonight.
Yeah.
On the overtime. I think we do need to...
Wait, what overtime? I, I asked for that. Where do we got this?
Karen, did you not give this to everybody?
No, I probably just didn't look through. Where's it at? Was it at?
Got it, you were in the bathroom.
Oh, can I have that, please? I was the one recording.
Yeah, they're in the pile.
Mine.
Karen, there.
What a nice guy.
Could have been on top.
We don't need to comment on it, but I think we do need to thank, thank you, Karen, for that and then also take heat on the amount of, uh, hours that are being accumulated.
May I suggest that now that, um, that report is done for the, um, county wide for the vehicles that you either have a copy of it in your office so that you can be good? You know, I don't think you're well aware, but recently we spent over three hundred thousand dollars on an ARPA account for a vehicle.
Out of ARPA?
Out of ARPA.
The sheriff?
I didn't know that we...
Sheriff vehicle?
The sheriff's vehicle, and then they took twenty-three thousand out of compensation. And I think those are things that we need to look at when you're trying to find out what we're going to do with equipment. We have one SWAT, we're counting up two. I'm not just saying you don't need it, but you also need to look at the fact that we have boats, ATBs, and EMA. We have a boat...
Those were donated, though.
Not all of them were.
How many boats to the head?
I don't remember them buying a boat.
I, I thought...
Yes, it would be nice.
Boat that was donated.
Can we get it? Can, can you, can you email it to Joy so she can mail it to the rest of us, please?
My present copy is going to have a copy of it.
Yeah, uh, can somebody in your office, please, email Joy so that it can get out to the rest of the council?
Please.
Thank you.
All right, I got a question. What's, so we got CT earned and CT taken. What am I looking at here? CT, where's the balance?
Comp time earned is CT earned.
Uh-huh.
CT taken is comp time taken. It's, we just ran a report of payroll. It does every single time someone takes comp time or earns, takes comp time or earns comp time. That's that ledger that's on the back pages there. And then all the totals are for the individuals.
And I don't want to use a specific person, but I'm just looking at the first one. It says comp time earned nine, comp time taken seventy. So does that mean she's got nine in the bank to be used still?
Uh, yeah, so there's not like a direct correlation on there. It depends on the department. Some departments require the people to take comp time within a certain amount of time, while others let it bank up there.
See, the reason we were looking for this, and I know in the past, we, we had people taking, we had people in our own department that were taking huge amounts of comp time and they were just adding up, hundreds and hundreds of hours. They quit and all of a sudden, we got to pay them out.
Sure.
So we were limiting, trying to stay on top of it. So where does it show what they're owed right now? Would that be earned?
So you, we would probably have to run a more comprehensive report outside of this year right now and then probably cross-reference that with department, um, policy first. Like, does that comp time expire or does, do they allow it to accrue?
Is that something you would be able to do for us?
We, we could start looking into at least getting a better idea of what we were at.
Then we know who to address. Like, hey, what the heck is going on? Or we're doing good.
Well, I think if you look at the second page, not after the back of the first page, uh, the other ones are detailed. And if you look at like, let's say, um, uh, Damian Huntsman, he's had forty-one point five hours, but he's used forty-two point five. So that pretty much says he's out of comp time. But we are, we are under the understanding that you were looking for anything over twenty hours, but you wanted to know.
Oh, sure, that'll work.
Kurt Nagel, she earned thirty-eight hours, but only for thirty-eight point five, she was eight point five, so she still has thirty hours bounce.
Okay, so that is that.
And if you look at Meredith Brockman, um, she had forty-four point five earned, and she used eight.
Where, where do you get these people?
The initial page.
Right, so you take the taken minus earned and that's, right?
The balance.
Right. Okay, but so for the first one, that's why I was using that as an example. It says she earned nine, but it's taken seventy. So does she owe us hours?
Well, it could have been just for the twenty-twenty-four that he ran the report.
Yeah.
Didn't include probably twenty-twenty-four.
Oh. Can we get a...
He would ask for a balance of twenty-twenty-four and he went in there and pulled it a little bit different than what it had. So I think what we're just going to do is a balance two report per individual.
We're looking at large ones. We'll do, address it with the department type of thing, is our, my hope.
Right. If you look at what's behind it, we really don't have that many large ones. It's an accumulation of departments, but most everybody except for maybe...
Fair.
Have under twenty.
Okay.
Which is what I think your goal was.
Yeah, that seems fair to me. I mean, that's not a huge number. I don't know what the rest of councilmen think, but... Jeremy, you have more experience with this. What are your thoughts? I mean, you're really old. You've been dealing with this for a long time.
I don't... Keep an eye on it, but I mean, I think, look at the policy. I mean, we, you all should have the handbook, right?
Mm-hmm.
I'll have a copy of the handbook with the policy. But it's also...
I got one.
We have HR, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's who I requested it from. And she went to the, because I didn't know who gave it to us.
Anything else?
Uh, I would, I'm certain we always, I could be wrong. Um, approve second reading.
Oh, yeah, we did.
Make a motion to approve second reading.
Second.
We didn't do that? All right, we have a motion and a second for the second reading. My fault, uh, apologize, uh...
Did we have a second reading?
It's a roll call. Roll call.
Can I just do all in favor?
All is in favor, say, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Man, you were smirking with me last year. Couldn't get away with nothing. Now.
I just had...
It's now. Had to go to every individual.
I had something real quick, real under, just, I was looking at the meeting times for us and just wanted to get a flavor of what you guys thought. I thought it was nice to have, uh, the commissioners meeting in the morning, council at night, and then we tried getting, uh, I believe our foundation meeting, kind of all three meetings in the same day. So if people wanted to attend the meetings, they could, they could attend them. Staff doesn't have to, excuse me, different, you know, at different times like the auditor. We put together, I had Joy put together, uh, for, for this year, there's about four or five meetings that I know were on the fourth Tu- fourth Tuesday. If we bumped them up a week, we could do like five meetings that would coincide with commissioners. I don't know if everybody on the council th- thinks that that would be worthwhile. Maybe not. Leave them at the fourth Tuesdays, but I figured I would get the, um, the calendar. She'll send it to you. If you guys think it's something that you think is beneficial? I just figured out what I'd...
Thoughts? Can we do that? We can do...
We thought it'd be a good idea to do the back that commissioners approve the contracts in the morning and then you fund in the evening. So I'm waiting for people a month before they can do it. That was one of the reasons I was suggesting.
Do we have to vote on that or?
No, I just, actually, let me do a little bit more legwork on this.
We have our meeting on the fourth, uh, Tuesday.
And that's what I was going to say, let me do a little more legwork on this. Joy just gave me this today. So what I was going to do is have Joy give this to you and kind of spell it out.